Good evening, welcome to work session. First one of the year, I think it's the 12th of January 2022, 7:33 PM. Let's start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Anybody taking attendance?
Mayor, that's not something we do at a work session.
Every week, every single week, every single time. I gotta put a post-it up. Okay. I'm bringing up my agenda, sorry. Okay, hello folks. Can we go around, see if anybody has? Any announcements? I think there are some.
I'll start. I just wanted to say that, you know, for a brief moment there, we thought maybe we were coming out of the COVID tunnel, but we kind of find ourselves still in it. And it's frustrating and it's tiring and especially now it's confusing. Even more so, you don't know what mask to wear, you're backed and boosted, but you can still get it, you know, you're just like, feels like everything kind of is turned upside down and I know that it's affecting our businesses still. I know that we're not out of the woods. So I also know that sitting outside is a great, is one way to mitigate risk exposure. So I, I think that we, we are gonna hopefully start talking about when the parklets can come back this spring. The date for that, because I know that, that would provide, if we can get them back in the spring, it'll help give us something to look forward to and, and help provide some relief. In terms of people sitting outside and, you know, Ovac is doing an amazing job testing and vaxing and you can pretty much get boosted. Pretty much anywhere now. I got the Moderna boost of the local pharmacy, just walked right in. So, you know, but I'm still not sure if I should go out for my birthday or stay home and I'm tired of staying home and, you know, I want to go out and I don't know what to do. So it's confusing, but hopefully we can at least do start, we can start talking about when people can, can sit outside again at our local businesses, you know, when the weather's a little better and that'll help. That's it.
Thank you Dana. I think that one of the reasons you're bringing it up is that you'd like the village staff, village management to start, putting a plan together, maybe recommend a date. You and I were talking, we're thinking maybe, April 1st, maybe there's a better day. Or there are changes we have to make to what we did last time. So I think it's being raised. To let the community know that we recognize, the unfortunate scenario of the pandemic and what it does to businesses in our community. And also maybe have the staff come up with a plan as to how to reopen. Might be things we learned from last time, maybe everything worked really well. So we're continuing. There's any pricing issues, et cetera, the process. That would be great. Okay. Anyone else? I'm not seeing anybody. Okay. Thank you all. I will have a question at the end, because I, Stuart, we're doing special meeting after first, what goes first here?
We're doing the work session then special and then we will adjourn to the special.
Fabulous. I have it lined up. Okay. So I wanted to, just let folks know that, I, on Monday, and it's been made public, Assemblywoman Sandy Galiff, who has been representing her constituents, in my opinion, I'm gonna use the word rock star, I'm gonna use the word really well, has announced that she will be retiring at the end of this year, at the end of her term. It has been, and I'm sure there will be more about this, but for me personally and for the community, I think she has just been, one of the best legislators, representatives, call it what you want, what some people may not know, she's also employed, many people in our community and her offices. She has been a mentor to many men and women, young and old. And she has been just tremendously helpful for the community. I live in the community, like all of us on the board and I would vote for her again, but it's her decision to move on for no other reason than she feels she has served, her time and I would say served it well. And so, I'm sure members of the board would agree with me that we are sorry to see that this is her last year. That doesn't stop us from asking Sandy Galiff to still support us throughout 2022, as she has in the past, and see the many ways that she will help with infrastructure issues, constituent concerns. And the list is actually quite long. So I want to thank, Assemblywoman Sandy Galiff personally, as the mayor, as a voter, member of the community and really on behalf of the board. And I am 100% sure there will be more to come, but that is sort of the news for this week and I wanted to make a, just don't take a moment of gratitude, to one of our outgoing elected officials, outgoing at the end of the year, still 11 and a half months left. So we look forward to that. On a personal fun note, I have to say that I run at the same time that Sandy does. So, I'm always used to seeing her yellow signs very close to mine. So, and I told her that, that I'm gonna miss that in the future. Okay. So that was the announcement for one of our, you know, esteemed colleague who represents us. And we're going to move right into the work session. We've got a lot to talk about and here we go, village manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First on the agenda tonight, we're gonna be talking about the 15, Crotton Avenue elevator renovation. As you know, we've talked about this renovation. Over the past year, we've had a few conversations at the last, last time we talked about it publicly, we, we decided to go ahead with a renovation project. Tonight, we, we have, our water superintendent and, up building and operations manager, Andy Case, along with our director of public works, Paul Fraley, here with John Fry of Nexus to take us through a proposal, that you should have all received earlier today. Fortunately, we couldn't get to you as early as I would like to. But they'll take you through a proposal, that Nexus has provided, John Fry is here from Nexus as well, that will provide for design and bid specs, for the elevator project. So with that, I will turn it over to Andy and Paul.
Maddie, could you just bring John over? Because I think he's on the other side.
He did. He's here now. He's here now.
Thanks, Stuart.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna start with the proposal and the overall scope of work. So, we asked Nexus to develop a proposal for the, we, to redo the whole entire elevator system, the renovation of the elevator system, the existing elevator system that's in the existing footprint. In that overall scope, it was to develop alternatives, to develop the bid document package. It was to look at the accessibility initiatives. It was to look at the elevator entrance doors, controls, the controls are 60 years old. The elevator doors are a constant issue with closing properly. So it would be new elevator doors as well, well as a new, cabin, a new elevator cabin that would fit into that footprint. The elevator machine room, it would be new motors, pulleys, gear reducers, electric running from the basement, up to the panel, would be a new panel up there. It would be HVAC for dehumidification. So you don't have any humidity issues and temperature issues, along with lighting and fire alarm, status where it would tie in smoke heads into the, the fire alarm system that we rehabilitated about two years ago in Village Hall. The unknowns here, so, part of the delay is, is, is because of me, because, I had asked John about two months ago to find two subcontracting consultants, instead of just one, so that we could, we can evaluate which one was better. So, John is an architect, as everybody knows, he knows how to pull all the disciplines together, but we needed an elevator expert. So he called two separate companies, priced it out and then met with them. And I met with one today, which I felt very comfortable with. That's their wheelhouse. They design elevators for old buildings and rehabilitate them. Also in John's scope, so he would hire this, this firm, Nexus would hire that firm, along with an MEP contractor, so mechanical and electrical contractor, that would look at the existing service in the building, look at the sizing, the electrical sizing and look at, mechanically how we would make this all happen. That's all under this proposal as well. And then also a certain amount of visits for construction management, for John's company, along with us to manage the project. The overall price is 16,000 and a majority of that is going towards the sub consultant. Any questions?
16,000 for what?
For, for Nexus's service, let me go through that, excuse me. That would be on page six. So, the initial project payment of $1,000, the sections one through two, and existing conditions, limited scope, the bid package, 3,500 for the, for the initial cost, 3,500 for the Nexus line item, which is really Nexus's, most of Nexus's work. And then the MEP elevator sub consultant, that's 11,000. So there's not, there's not a lot of money on here as far as, Nexus's money, it's mostly for the subs and for the electrical proposal, the 11,000 of that, of the 16,000. So it's almost like a pass through from, from Nexus to the sub consultants.
Andy, maybe you could just go into like a little bit detail for, for us laypeople out there, you know, specifically, this is a, you know, fairly, the renovation of the elevator is a big job. That's, that's a big, big job. And, and this is really the planning work that goes into making sure, you know, you know, explain the bid specs and everything, just so everybody's clear on.
Yeah. So, so, so also with John's responsibility, Nexus's responsibility would be, so they would, meet with their sub consultants, they would get an overall plan from them, a spec, they would take these specs drawings, put it into Nexus's, front end and the village, excuse me, the villages front end, so are, what we would go out to bid for. So it'd be like our bid documents. They would coordinate the drawings along with, what's required by the building department, what's required by the electrical inspectors, what's required by code. And they would develop the bid documents, they would do the drawings, they would help set bid dates, they would be there for the bid opening. They would advertise this information with the clerk. Once we, pick the best qualified contractor, we would issue notice to proceed with the, the architect's approval. And the actual days of construction are about 12 weeks of construction. Now, lead times, I don't know the lead times yet. And the other unknown that I wanted to talk about was, as I said, there's an electrical, engineer that would be coming in, we need to verify that the electric coming into the building has the capacity to handle this new system. So that's something that like, we won't know until we get these, these experts in that John would hire. And we would make sure it's covered in, you know, the bid, obviously, but we don't want to find that out later. You don't want to issue a notice to proceed and then you find out you don't have enough electric capacity. So it's like a multi-step process. Is that any better?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Of course, it's gonna be on the electrical side of it. Do we know, do we know what's feeding the existing, elevator equipment right now?
Yes. Right now, so I opened the cabinets today, we have 208, 208 voltage, three phase, 60 amps. And they, they think it's gonna require more amperage.
Plus, it was an ungrounded 60 amps, 60 amp surface up to the penthouse.
Yeah. So, so honestly, the, the, the actual wires themselves were clothed. We need to run new home runs back to the downstairs, no matter what, new wires and new conduit.
Assuming this is a pulley system, correct?
Correct.
So, and what's the size of the service coming into the building?
400 amps.
Okay. So, my quick thoughts on that is to reutilize the 60 amp breaker. And the transformer upstairs, to step it up to 480 volt, for your equipment, which should give you the capacity of 120 to 130 amps. Which I can imagine at that voltage, you'd need anything more than that to run that equipment and it'd be more efficient equipment at that voltage. That's just food for thought. Without having to get into a major overhaul of the service of the building itself. You could make that work off of that. That's one element. And we know the ADA problem that exists. So when they do the doors, are they opening the whole opening and putting all new, doors that might be a little bigger if they have the room? That's a question that I don't know. And the fire alarm aspect, I presume there's gonna be a primary and alternate recall in case of an alarm, that are tied to the smoke heads out in front of the elevator. And probably a phone line or something for emergency phone or something, or intercom inside the elevator.
So. Agreed. I didn't, I, I, I missed the phone, but I'm, I'll double check the phone, right? It makes a lot of sense. I know that we're covered with the fire system. We built a system that's got capacity to expand in the Village Hall.
I, I think that's the smarter play on it.
Yep.
To run 480 equipment. It runs much more efficient. And, and you can, you'll, with that 16 amp breaker, you know, you, you still probably have the capacity, you could probably put up to a 70 or 75 or 80 amp breaker on there, I'm sure. Right. But you wouldn't need that much. So at the 480 volts, whatever that equipment requires, you know, then you could set your, your panel or your control center off of that transformer. So I think that's a smart play without having to get in and open a whole can of worms.
I agree. I think, I think that's a great idea. We did that out at Pleasantville Road on a job just recently, a step up transformer stuff.
It's just, it's like, all that equipment is, 208 is an antiquated voltage. Yes, it exists, everybody has it in the house, but when it comes to a building, a commercial building, any building that I'm in is all 480, everything. So, because it's more efficient, way more efficient. So, and I can't, you, I can't imagine for a 24 elevator, that you'd need any more than 145 amps at 480 volts for that motor.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, there's the unknowns of what they designed to put in there, but I'd be very surprised if it was more than that. And I've done plenty of elevators in my tenure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Andy, what is the next part of the presentation?
Okay. So if there's any other, if there aren't any other questions, this is pretty much it. So we're looking for authorization, to sign an agreement, for the manager to sign an agreement with Nexus for $16,000. Once that happens, then they start developing this bid spec and we get going. My only concern is lead times on equipment, but either way, we have to, we have to move forward in some way.
Okay, that's understandable, but we're also getting this a little bit piecemeal. Actually, I saw Bob was, was gonna go in a different direction. So I'll ask. We're doing this piecemeal. You're coming here to ask for basically, one piece of it.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, let me, let me finish the process here. Sorry to like drag this out. So, once we develop the bid specs, we go out to bid, I believe we borrowed $300,000 in the budget. We see what the numbers come in at. Once the numbers come in and if it's a qualified bidder and it's, best practices and we feel comfortable with that person, then, we would come back to the board and we'd ask for authorization to move forward and sign the agreement.
There's one, and if I may, there's one more resolution in between. You have authorization for, the resolution tonight is for John's contract. Then there's, a resolution to go out to bid. Then there's a resolution to award.
Yeah, sorry about.
So I was expecting it. I think you guys should just give us the picture of the elevator. It's very hard, except for, one or two of us who are intricately sort of understanding of the pieces. Just give us the arc, what you're asking for, regardless of how it's written. So we have a sense at the end of the day, what the public's getting, you know, and then we can just vote on it.
I think Andy, if you want to add the one piece that we, I mean, we usually do come in, they, you know, we get the consultant agreement via resolution and then we come back those two additional times. The only thing I think maybe Andy, you left out a little more detail you could provide on the anticipated cost of the capital project when it's done. So we know why we're setting forth with John, because we anticipate spending this much money for the entire project.
Yeah, I just want to remind you guys that last time you were in front of us, the numbers were totally like off kilter. And so the point was, am I wrong Karen? No? I think afterwards we said they seem, and I'm not saying that in a judgy way, I mean, that they seemed, just big estimates and that you guys are gonna hone in a little bit and say, oh, we think it's more like this, that or the other. And by the way, board, there's a supply shortage coming down the pike and sure enough, supply chain shortage, hidden all time high, et cetera, et cetera. So, I just don't want to keep doing piecemeals because we have so much to do in 2022. I sort of wanna, move this along and say, you know, do we know what we're asked? These are the people. Fine. This is the estimate to get us estimates and our, and, and all of that. That's what this really is. Fine. And do we know what we're looking at here? Like, what's the size of this bread basket we're looking at here or elevator basket, if you will?
300,000.
Oh, that's, that's what, that's what was budgeted, the 300,000.
Yep, and.
I believe when we saw numbers, this price was in the neighborhood of the mid 500,000.
Okay, let me explain that. So, so there were prices that, that the architect thought that a new elevator would cost, five or 600,000, like you guys said. Then we said, you know what, we really need to look at that compared to what was at the operation center. The operation center on a brand new three-stop elevator, we had close to a million. And then that work session that we were at that night, some of the board members were in agreement that we would move forward at the rehabilitation of the elevator. Because we, we had a price, a pretty concrete price between 250 and 300,000 to rehabilitate the elevator. So that's, that's the numbers. The discrepancy was on the new elevator, not the rehabilitated elevator. And we know a new elevator would cost probably more than that based on the footprint that we're dealing with back there.
Okay.
Yep. But you're not wrong about those discrepancy of numbers. That was on the new elevator.
I see. Okay. Alrighty. So we're being asked to approve, or to agree to having the village manager sign what is basically cost of going on to actually do the real project. The cost of costing out, and planning out, in, in layman's term, if I got that right. Bob, thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please?
If I, just one more thing. I'm not gonna hold you to it, but what would be an anticipated, time that the bid would go out and, and then award of the bid and work to start?
John, you, John, do you want to talk about how long? Yeah.
Yeah, we have, we've discussed that at length. We feel like the, the, the document package can be issued the end of February. Depending on, what we feel like a reasonable response time is from, from elevator renovation specialists. I'm guessing that's a three-week period. We'll know more as we get into February regarding, because we'll, we'll, we'll perform some preliminary recon with elevator renovation specialists to get a sense of what their timeline is. And then try to align a reasonable specified bid period with reality, with their schedules. But I'm, I'm guessing that bid period is typically three weeks.
I, and I agree with that bid period of at least three weeks. And I feel that, and I, it's up to Paul too, but, I think it would be mandatory to have a pre-walkthrough so that.
Yes, absolutely.
Bidders would see exactly what they're bidding on and there's no unknowns other than, you know, real unknowns.
The, the one other thing that we wanna, may want to talk about, you know, we're saying bid documents, it, it's possible that this may be an RFP. Because the, the nature of the work and you're really taught, looking at, and I am gonna get the terminology wrong Stuart, so help me out here, but we're, we're really looking for, the vendor has to meet very specific criteria. So.
I think, I think RFP is wrong though. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a publicly bid project.
No, no, Paul, it may not be. That's what we discussed. This could be a best value project.
That best value.
Best value, it is not done through a bid, it's an RFP process. And the board has to decide on that and they then determine what are the factors to decide best value. Best value here could be important because it need not be lowest responsible, particularly if you're dealing, dealing with it like a, an item such as an elevator, where warranties and service become issues to, for factors to be, I, I don't want to step on anyone's toes. I'm just saying, it may not be a bid issue, it may be an RFP issue through the best value, which is what this board adopted last year for these kind of projects. That's all I'm saying.
I guess we could talk about it later.
It'll be done the way it's presented to the boards. You guys could have a little conversation before it's presented. Tonight is about, the bid part. Anybody else? I love this job. I mean, I didn't know this much about elevators by the time I'm done, man. I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna know elevators. And it's, I love this elevator. It's just can't work anymore, but it's, it's like an antique.
All the stars align, which we know doesn't happen, but if they do all align, I'm thinking we're looking at a timeline of April, mid-April, the latest, May, maybe this project getting off the ground.
And John, John, didn't you say it was 12 weeks of construction?
Yes, that, our elevator consultant who happened to coincidentally, be at 16 Crotton today and Andy and I spent some time with him after we went from penthouse to basement. His, his overview was this is a 10-week installation process to 12 weeks. Now 10-week is the elevator, we've got penthouse work to do, we obviously have electrical work to do and there's fire alarm work to do. So all of that is going to add time.
I'm just, this is like the Route 9 diet concept. For anybody listening to this, there are no penthouses in this building. Nobody's living in a penthouse and there's no penthouse.
Elevator machine room.
Yeah, it's basically the machine room. It happens probably, that's all. So before I hear on social media that there's a penthouse that we're living in somewhere up there. Want to be, this is just terminology that's used here.
Spent a lot of time in that penthouse. I spent a lot of time up in that penthouse. It is not a penthouse, it's an attic.
Yes, I was gonna say.
It's a little room within a big attic.
Penthouse. I gotta love that. Okay. Penthouse. I gotta love that. Okay. Any other comments? I'm seeing Manny's hand up, but I can't tell if that's just moving his glasses or there's a question.
I I have a few questions. One general comment on on the on the contract uh for John, I guess. This is just semantics in a way. Uh, can we either put NC or Nexus Creative? Because it's very confusing. The sections that says Nexus Creative and the other ones, they are just NC throughout, different paragraphs that just want to be consistent throughout the whole contract.
Sure, we can initiate those.
General comment on now. Um, the other one, if if you can just clarify for me, um, I guess that the base bid um contract that we have with you um is sixteen thousand dollars. That does not include structural engineering process and because we haven't worked in. Okay, so.
There's some outliers.
Anticipating on that to be, if anything, because I'm assuming we we're gonna have to do structural stuff.
Well, I I mean, in in as much transparency and sincerity is I can share today and and this is really updated as of today. The elevator consultant did not see any problems for what he could see uh regarding the hoist beam and it's primarily the hoist beam that's potentially a structural question. Um, other than that, um we haven't handicapped any other potential structural issue, so.
So John and and you know, and everybody else in this call, as we know, when you go into an old house and you try to the renovations, you always find something. And especially when we're trying to put an elevator in here. So I'm gonna anticipate that there's gonna be some sort of a structural number at some point.
Well, we identified and Andy, you might want to lend to this or Paul that that clearly the the wisdom behind that notion and others is typically accounted for in the mechanics of a um contingency item in the construction budget. So we've we've just discussed.
So you you put in this on the part of the construction phase of any structural additional because it's gonna have to be an engineer who designs whatever happens to it. Sure.
If we need one, right.
Whatever that whatever that number may be, you want to put a note, I guess, in you and you spec that that should be part of their contract. Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think that's what I'm saying. I think what I'm saying is we're we're identifying, I think the strategy we discussed internally is to identify a line item within the construction allowance that covers potential structural, whether it's it's a it's a professional service or a structural item.
Okay, so regardless of what that may be, we are still gonna be paying, if anything, for an structural consultant for this particular project.
If needed, yes.
Need it if needed, which most likely is gonna be more than what the contract is. So so the other question that I have is if you can clarify this a little bit for me, because again, I was just kind of I didn't go through the the contract for in in a lot of detail, but what I browsed through is to me, and it probably is just me, the CA portion of this. So the amount that you that you are charging, the thirty-five hundred is just for the drawings and putting that together.
That is correct.
Portion of of your scope of work, besides the eight hours that you are including as part of portion of section two something, everything else is gonna be hourly.
Yes.
And then the hourly portion, even though you have your hourly rate, you're saying that you're gonna be charging for a hundred and seventy-five dollars for any staff member?
Yes, that's that's our what we call the blended rate. Yes.
Okay, so even if you were to go there, because you'll be in the principal, um, I'm gonna take you won't be charging the two seventy-five, you'll be charging the one seventy-five.
That is correct. Thank you for pointing that out.
Well, it's a blended rate, so.
All right, I I um, we can have a discussion about that.
Okay, but I'm glad you I'm glad you highlighted that.
Okay, all right, so.
And and you know, just as another notion, um the elevator consultant, as Andy highlighted, it the the techni- the bulk of the of the technical work and the review is really in his scope of work. So our scope of work i- in terms of CA um compared to the elevator's consultants' scope of work is relatively minor.
Andy, I just want to go back on your the structural engineer part. I the part that to think that whoever this elevator contractor is, doesn't have a structural engineer on board.
That's true. We actually talked about that with the consultant, that there may be the 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 alternate mechanism, for example, if it's isolated to the hoist beam, that that's that that consulting line item is uh assigned to the elevator contractor. That's that's a perfect example of another alternative.
Okay, any other comments? All right, look, the bottom line here is, out of all of this conversation, elevator has to be done at the highest value, least dollar, and somebody better managing all these multiple people showing up on sites and charging by the hour and all that. I'm not planning to be there, but somebody better be there and it better come in on budget. We have a lot of work to do this year and we better uh maintain a reputation of due diligence. And if we don't like work, we fire people. And if we do like, we hire them again. Uh, you'd like to speak in plain English? I think that is about as plain as it gets. Um. I think we're ready to, um, so Stuart, you're putting this into something?
Mayor, I have a resolution which will be read at the special meeting tonight.
Very efficient. Thank you kindly. Village manager?
Thank you. Um, thank you, everyone. Uh, our next item is a vehicle use policy. So um, as you know, vehicle use policy is one of the policies that we have been uh charged with um working on. Uh it is important uh that we have all our policies codified and we update them regularly and reflect on them. The vehicle use policy uh proposal recommendation right now that that the draft policy that Marissa Rockerson sent out um earlier is really a a first step. So this is really to focus on the things that we need to be doing to make sure that and and to be honest, that we are mostly always doing. Um, but really codifying it so that it is crystal clear to anybody who drives on village business understands their responsibilities while they are um performing village business or driving a village vehicle. So with that, I would like to turn this over to Marissa.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, everyone. Um. So as Karen mentioned, for tonight's discussion, our goal is introduce the topic and review our plan for how we're going to update it. For the board, the purpose of this topic on the agenda is to see if you have any initial questions or comments that we can either discuss tonight or use to help frame our conversations and research on the subject and ultimately incorporate into our own version of the policy. The two drafts that I sent you were templates that our insurance brokers, FOA and Sons, suggested were a good place to start. I know that they have some typos and some language that would need to be updated for the policy to be useful for our village. But again, based on what we had, we thought these were useful templates to get our conversation and work started. If you had a chance to review the documents, you saw that the two templates are focused more, as Karen mentioned, on the general principles of use and formalizing our driver safety program. So that we are able to publish our updated guidelines for employees and help provide clarity where needed. We're going to focus establishing the guidelines for use first and then we will review the categories of village vehicles and who has access. Since we currently have many drivers and we haven't updated our guidance or asked for signed acknowledgements, it's important that we start here. I do want to point out, again, as Karen mentioned, that many of the items in the policy template are already being followed by the village. But there's no formal current policy detailing all of the work the village does does. So while we are recommending I'm sorry, does someone have?
I'm sorry. I I wasn't on mute and I coughed and I'm wearing a mic. Sorry about that.
No problem. Um, so while we are recommending the adoption of a policy, the proposal will incorporate much of what is already done by the village. But we are not necessarily getting credit for it because it's not documented or outlined in one place. Before we take a brief look at the documents that I sent out and Maddie's going to help me um, you know, show, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm go- I'm going to just make a comment. I mean, it was sent Monday. I know with people's schedules and other priorities, it's a long document with very, very little print, small print and many pages. That being said, there's never a great time or a bad time or whatever. Um, I do want to say this, that when some of us ran for office or some of us spoke publicly and when some of us um have asked for this information, it goes into two buckets. One bucket um with no order of priority. One bucket is who gets cars? Who amongst um the folks that work in the village are entitled, should be entitled? Should anybody get cars? Should no one get cars? Why do we get cars? Where do they go? What do they do? How much and all that? That is a legitimate, healthy conversation. But it shouldn't matter who, whether it's John, Paul, Dick, or Harry, or Susan, or Allison that get the cars. What matters is the titles and the positions that may or may not per the board's direction and other conversation that we should have about who, what, where, and where. This discussion tonight should stay focused on, um, not only for the sake of brevity, but exactly as the head of a as Marissa says, head of personnel, is having a policy in place that if something happens, and this is when you need policies, you need it when people get hired so that they're aware of what their responsibilities are. You need them when they leave so they don't think they're entitled to more than they were supposed to get. And you need them if, God forbid, um, something happens. Then everybody turns to the policy and says, oh, my gosh, this policy doesn't exist. We always thought this was what we were entitled to. This was all what we were supposed to do. So I really am grateful that we're starting twenty-two with like a policy in place. I do have a sense, I'm hearing um also what's being said here is that it is helpful for insurance companies that their clients um have policies in place. So it's all around a good thing. That being said, we're gonna fo- focus on this bucket. It does not alleviate, nor does it change um my understanding that there are members of this board and previous boards, by the way, who want to have a discussion about a policy about who gets cars, who doesn't, and how we transition to wherever the board thinks it should transition to over time. That needs to put on the agenda and that has to happen in twenty twenty-two as well. The sooner the better. And I know, having um spoken to Karen um about the agendas for work sessions and legislative, that the list gets longer and longer every time we talk. Again, I do want to have that conversation because I'm one of those people that would like to have a clear understanding. But tonight, it's really about the policy itself and whether we understand it, whether we agree with it or not, and to do a little bit of editing as needed or not. Um. So I'll try to keep us on track because this is one of those topics that can take three hours or thirty minutes or three minutes. So um, that's gonna be sort of my role a little bit in here. Um, so I think we can get started. Who's who's doing the talking? Marissa, are you reading us through it? Maddie's gonna share and?
Sure. Yes. And so and and really for tonight, although and Karen, Stuart, you can weigh in. We weren't intending to read word for word because, again, this was a template and I know you just received it on Monday. Um, you know, this is really something if, you know, and and certainly you can review it after and and ask questions or comments. This was really just to get it sort of on the radar. We are going to go back and um, you know, I imagine work with some of our department heads, you know, really fine tune and provide um, a better, you know, a a complete recommendation. Um, you know, for your approval, which you will have in advance and be able to, you know, to read, or certainly we can read through it. Um, so again, you know, there's definitely some some things that could work in this policy, but you know, I think some things that we'd we'd probably rewrite a bit, so.
Where did you get the policy from?
The this polit- the both documents, again, were sent from um our insurance brokers.
Right.
FOA, yep. As a good starting point.
Okay, are you making recommendations? So the the point is that when we come to work sessions, the we need direction, right? Like, we are like, um, we need a desired outcome. We either go through the pages and quickly look. Those of us that have time to read it, maybe should be asked to speak up and say, or you, Marissa, or Maddie, or the manager, say, look, there's three key points we'd like you to focus on and five key points. So we need like, um, it's like a little GPS, if you could tell us the desired outcomes. And if all you want is for us to, um for those of us that didn't read it, to read it, I read through most of it. Um, I didn't ask who read it and who didn't. Uh, so you have to tell us what you want out of this moment in time.
Yeah, let me let me just back up. So we did send it to you guys, um, you know, and the request in in the email was to review before the meeting, like we we you send it to you to read. We understand that you guys get busy and uh everything. So um, what we're really looking for is um big, you know, this is a very, very standard policy. I don't think there's much that's very controversial here, but if you had any points of controversy, but why don't we put up and share the screen and then we we don't necessarily.
I could start off with some, but.
Why don't we share the screen and then we everybody can look at it? Um, and then we can just sort of talk uh through the major points. Um, so that that way we're all, you know, we all know what we're looking at. Um, I don't think it will take us that long to go through it if if we don't. You know, again, it's it's a pretty standard policy and ninety percent of the stuff is things that we do anyway. We just want to make sure that all staff knows what their responsibilities are, so there's no confusion down the road.
Marissa, you'd like to start with the driver agreement, right?
Well, I I think maybe it'd be, yeah, I I was going, I thought that would be a quick to 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 give a good sense and then we could get to the policy.
The other way around. Alrighty.
Well, I I figured we'd spend more time on the policy, right? So this is a sample driver agreement. It's, as Karen said, pretty standard. Um, currently, we are not asking our drivers to um or department heads who take home vehicles to to sign something. Um, so this would be, you know, I think a a quick win for us to to review. But yeah, I I I I think this is pretty simple and we can probably, unless anyone has questions, move over to the policy document.
Yeah, our our family members or other people, I didn't, I didn't read, I actually didn't do this one. I looked at the other one. Are family members allowed to be in the cars and what is liability for family members, friends, relatives, neighbors, whatever? Or that it's uh who are in the car at the time? Are they allowed to drive the car or just the employee?
The the way the language is, family members are allowed to be in the car. They're not allowed to drive the car.
Okay. Right, and may I ask a big picture while others are reading or? I I see a lot of agreements. I don't understand the accountability, so I will check for defects. I'm just arbitrarily choosing the fourth bullet. Okay? What if I don't do that? What happens to me? Like, I don't understand what happens if I don't do any of these, actually.
So while it's not implicit, I mean, not cited rather, um, you you have to follow these policies. This this is an agreement to use the use the vehicle. So I think that that does lead, you know, it's it's similar to any other policy that, you know, when you sign an employee handbook. Um, anything, you know, if if you're not compliant in this, um then that is going to mean if you have a take-home vehicle, it's risk your vehicle. If you're driving a vehicle for work and you're not complying with this, you may, you know, it it could be uh something that would go to discipline. So there would be consequences for this. Um, but this is along the lines of of the same thing when you sign any other policy. I don't know that it's always spelled out um that if you don't follow the policy, but just so it's clearly understood what the policy is for anybody.
I I get that. Therefore, my question, so there are two buckets. One is that it could jeopardize your employment, so that should be stated. It could, doesn't mean it will. It could, so people understand what they are signing and that they understand the seriousness of what they're signing. Number, because they're using somebody else's property, essentially. Number, because they're using somebody else's property essentially. Number two, um, should be, um. That, my concern is that if I don't, I don't know, pick one, pick any of them. That the insurance might say, you're not covered for this, because you have a policy that says the person was supposed to do X. The person didn't do X, something, uh, uh, they left the key in the car, the car was stolen, we're not liable for that. Go get the money from the guy who left the keys in, who, who knew he wasn't supposed to leave the key in. So it's about insurance coverage, which is, this is being given out by insurance company, which is why my original question to Marissa was, where did you get this? So I do think there is always an if, therefore, not a but, but a therefore. Without the therefore, without the accountability, all this could do is prevent us from collecting from the insurance company, but. Necessarily hold anyone accountable for leaving the key in the car, for example, a careless act. Why should, you know, taxpayers pay for a careless act, on one hand? On the other hand, should employees be liable for their mistakes in such a dramatic fashion? As paying back seventy thousand dollars for a car, so I'm only asking on the big picture, is to go back to the insurance or figure it out. With, what is the accountability, once I sign this, to me as an employee? Does that make sense? And if there isn't, the insurance says, oh, that's silly, we cover you anyway, okay, then I would, just want to make sure that's what's happening here.
I will confirm that.
That can easily be checked through, I, I have the policy here, that can easily be checked.
Thank you.
So, and, so I want to piggyback on this. So this is just. This is just for, because when we talk about this, this kind of policy, sure, uh, are we talking about fire department? Are we talking about police department as well? Uh, because that's a totally, you know, while I'm reading all these things, it kinda. It, it. A lot of the stuff is like obey laws, um, you know, that kind of stuff is a little bit. Distance from what, you know, emergency, um, departments do. So. Would this not qualify? Uh, for a police officer to sign, or one member of the fire department will have to sign these documents as well?
Manny, are you just asking, who are you expecting to give this to? Okay. Who's this going to?
This should go to anyone who drives a, a, a village vehicle. Um, a village-owned vehicle, and then we should have, now, I did speak to the chief, um, earlier this week. Um, and there are, um, certain protocols that may be different, I haven't had an opportunity to speak with the, the fire chiefs yet. But this is something that, that, you know, again, it's a baseline agreement, and I believe what the police department. Um, and again, I have no reason to believe that, that even the fire department, people are essentially, for the most part. A lot of this is common sense, but again, there's some things that, that are more nuanced, so it is important that people who are driving village vehicles. You know, understand that there is a responsibility in their driving property that does not belong to them. So, uh, Chief Sylvester, I know you're on the call, if you want to just like mention some of the things we talked about that might come up. Um, that can be adapted to different departments and, and divisions and, and address emergency workers as well.
I'm sorry, I heard you call my name, but quite frankly, I wasn't really paying attention to the discussion, where, where are we, where are we at?
So, I, I, um, we were just talking about the driver agreement, so you and I had spoken earlier this week about the fact that. You have some things in place, this may be different, um, while there may be different considerations for OPD or. Fire department, that this very, very basic, uh, agreement really serves as a baseline for anybody who drives a village vehicle. On, um, what to do and what not to do in order to, uh, maintain, uh, you know. Uh, good standing here with, uh, in terms of driving and safety and also, uh, insurance liability.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know that what I read, I, I looked over it a few days ago, um, quite honestly, I didn't come to this meeting prepared for this, I wasn't on for this topic, so. I know that it covered a lot of insurance topics, and, you know, given time, I could go back and look through it and see how it relates to the police department, but. To be honest, I didn't come prepared for this one, because it wasn't the topic I thought I was speaking on.
Well, I didn't mean to catch you by surprise, but my, my point is that these are, uh, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Chief, but my point is.
I'd love to back you up, Karen, I, I don't know, you know, I, I don't have it in front of me, and, and I don't really remember what it said in it, I remember the conversation we had, but.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I just think the bigger issue, if we're gonna stay top line, number one, Matt, if you can move it up, I'm sure people read the four bullets by now. Marissa, I think you're gonna have to just, with Karen and Maddie and whoever, and the chief, just say, okay, where is the intersection that this affects? All cars, where does it affect fire, where does it affect police? But in general, I, I started saying, oh, I'm a proponent of this, because I think you have to have this in this day and age, you know, we're. Got a lot of cars out there, we're not a small village with, you know, a handful of, uh, of village cars, we've got a fleet out there. Um, the only other comment I would make, and I'm gonna open it up to everybody else, is, is, um. The, the reference to the village, you let the village know, inform the village, I would just, um, say that. If you're gonna have especially new employee, you might want to say the village manager, I mean, you really have, or the supervisor, you should be a little, the village is actually not a person. There isn't a village anybody can actually call, so I mean, this is again, as we said before, new employees. People who may not be new, but maybe they got promoted, now they're entitled to a car or getting one, et cetera, et cetera. And if you guys could just figure out the intersection between the different types, as Manny Casada had said, who's this going to? Maybe ninety percent of it works, maybe you're gonna have to have one for police and one for fire and one for everybody else, I don't know, but. In principle, I'm in support of creating policies that our insurance company also. Uh, has recommended not only for us, but in general, so that people understand the responsibilities. Um, I know Manny has spoken, Manny, were you done, or, or is there anything else?
I, I'm done for this section, yes.
Okay, and, um, anybody else in the gallery as I, as I look? I love the cell phone thing, because I cannot tell you how many calls I get about. Employees while driving garbage trucks and everything else around cell phones. Um, and, and I think when people sign them, they'll go, okay, I gotta like, watch myself, well, I mean, I'm hoping for that, we'll see what happens. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, um, so this is basically a. Uh, safety operational agreement of a village vehicle if you're using it. I, but I do believe there is an existing, uh. Vehicle policy that doesn't address this. That addresses, uh, who gets vehicle, which you, uh, touched on a little bit, Rico, that I believe is something that. Um. You know, I agree with this, I read it, I don't see anything that really stands out. Um, fire department wise, um, maybe. It could be tweaked for fire, maybe it could be tweaked for police, I, you know, because it's a whole different can of worms, you know, you're driving million-dollar apparatus. About seventy, ninety, seventy-five thousand dollar car or truck, so I believe, I, I, I support that. But I believe, um, I don't, like I said, I don't see that it sticks out with this. Um. But, uh, the actual who and why and where vehicles go after three thirty. It's more of my concern, but I believe it's how I opened this up originally last year, so. I'm okay with that, but I agree it should be on the agenda to discuss that section of, besides looking into this.
Thank you, Bob, yeah, I think that, that's why I broke it, because I knew. That was one bridge, and I apologize, the last bullet does say policies may result in suspension termination, so it does actually address that. Um, this is the one I didn't read, I read the other one, which was like many pages long. Um, also, uh, I do want somebody to go back to the insurance and say that once people sign it, that, that, does it have an effect, actually? Aside from what we do to somebody, I still want them paying for any damages. Okay, anybody else, uh, can't see, Dana, I lost you for a second there. Do you want, do you have anything to say, Dana?
Um. No, I mean, it seems that this policy has a lot about deterrence, you know, I mean, when somebody signs something that says all this stuff, you know, you're like, okay, I guess I. Really seriously need to not talk on my phone when I drive. But, um, I don't know, yet, so I, but it's interesting, I didn't think about, I mean, our. Police and our firemen have been driving these vehicles for a very long time without something like this, right, so. They're a special case, I just, I think that somebody driving their SUV. To a meeting on a job site, construction site in the village, for example, is different than somebody driving a fire truck to a, to an emergency situation. It's a much, that is a much different type of vehicle, so it seems like there would be a somewhat of a different. Agree, I don't, it's gotta be differences somehow, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that, that it's important, this is really the baseline for any vehicle, so. The likelihood of you driving your fire apparatus to a fire, leaving the keys in the ignition and having the fire truck stolen is probably not a big. You know, it's not quite apples to apples there, but, um, the, um, you know, this is a baseline agreement, so in any department. We do have vehicles that people take home, or vehicles that are, are being driven in a different capacity. Um, or in, in several different capacities, so this just covers a blanket of anybody who's driving. And it's really our, um, the intention of this is to get your in, get your input on this, because. Um, as we well know, um, these policies get complicated really quick, they seem like they shouldn't, but they do. So this is stage one, because this is really important that we just have this space covered, it's the most basic one, and the most. For this, uh, for purposes of insurance, the most insen- essential and safety. Um, next phase, we will be working on, uh, different recommendations, and we'll do some work on, um. I think that we'll be able to do cost analysis and, and also look at different models of the way, um. Other vehicle usage, whether it's take-home cars for people who are essentially working twenty-four seven. Um, versus other things and, and give recommendations on that, that'll take a little bit more work, but we wanted. We thought it would be easier to get to where we wanted to be if we looked at this in chunks and, um.
Okay.
Make sure we had, had the basis, the most basic things covered.
So this will be the most basic, Omar, are you good with this? I think everybody else has said something.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you. Um, the longer form, as I call it, um, which we got a couple of days ago. Um, I, I would, I would just like. Recommendations, because to read the whole thing and have a conversation about line by line, the only thing that called my attention is I didn't know we had a fleet supervisor. The fleet supervisor that it keeps referring to, but we might not have, because this is, you know.
We would be.
I didn't know we had a fleet manager, and I didn't know we needed one, so that was news to me.
We probably do, and we haven't, again, all of the, a lot of this just happens informally.
Okay.
You know, so it's really just codifying it, so I don't think there's any major, um, you know, this just gives a basic template. So we really just wanted you to have a look at it directionally, what we can do is, I don't think there's necessarily need to go through it line by line. But we, you know, just to give you an idea of what we're doing, we're gonna be looking at this and then really tailoring it, um, getting more input from. The chief and, um, and, uh, the fire department as well as, uh, the, uh. The, uh, de facto fleet managers now, and making sure that, um, everything makes sense for the village and addressing anything that might be missing. And then we can present that to the board, um, in more specific, you know, um.
Okay.
But we wanted to make sure if there was anything that, um. Was, uh, you know, i- i- and again, if you, you want to read this more carefully and get back to us, this is gonna be an iterative process, so.
Alrighty.
Marissa, I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to, to add?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was planning to just quickly walk through the different sections, um, to draw your attention. Um, you know, as, as Karen, is, is that okay?
Yeah.
Would you say the time? Okay, so yeah, so, um, right, so in, in terms of the fleet manager, you know. What you'll likely see and what we're thinking of, um, you know, rather than one role, um, really, you know, a collective, right? As, as Karen mentioned, um, and then if you scroll down to, um. The pages two to four, Maddie. Um, you know, here, th- this section describes the different types. Um, you know, which we, which we've started to talk to a little bit about in terms of the, um, the types of employee vehicle use. In the village, um, you know, which can include assigned private cars, unassigned vehicles, which include our pickup trucks and vans. Um, you know, our vehicles that require commercial's driver's license, and then, um, you know. This, this policy draft, which I think Karen, this is part, I think where we would have some discussion. Is this idea of employees who use their personal vehicle on company business. Um. So I did want to, you know, draw your attention to that, I'm not sure, Mayor, since you did read this policy, if you picked up on that piece, or, you know.
That one actually discussed with Karen earlier, because wherever I've worked, um, including my current job, by the way. Um, using my personal car for business and then getting a ticket or having an accident actually is on me. Um, the, uh, the, the feeling they have is when you're on business, your response, you're supposed to be a responsible driver, anything happens is on you. We didn't cause that to happen, that's not the same as answering an emergency situation, by the way, that's a different scenario. Um, I think it, it becomes especially important if the part two of the conversation is. As I think some trustees want, I'm not saying the majority, and I'm not speaking for this, but I've been in this seat a while, and I've heard people's arguments. That you want to transition to a fleet where fewer people have, uh, cars from the village. And more people use their personal car and get either a stipend or reimbursements or whatever, because it is economically better for the village. If that is the way, this becomes really important, is having this, um. Thought through, and I'm not planning to think through it now, but it needs to be thought through. Um, as to, you know, what you're asking people to do, because they're using their private, like, I don't know, they, they. Went on an errand, it's not like they use the car all the time for business, but they had to go to a meeting, that they had to go to an errand, or whatever. Um, for the village manager, whatever it is that they're doing, so, um. It becomes actually increasingly important, if we don't go that way, it doesn't become increasingly important. So, um, those were sort of a couple of items that I had, um. There were a couple minor things, but I don't need to have that done in a work session, I could circle things and send it to you, some of the stuff that. Um, I saw on here, they're not super important, they're just questions.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
May I piggyback on that, so, is, um, you know, I, I also had questions in regards to the training, but I'm gonna get back to that one. In regards to, uh, employee, village employees using their own vehicle. Um, and I'm not sure where will this fall, or, uh, it should be under reimbursables, because. I, I haven't seen one and probably have missed it, but there was a couple times that I actually sent in the vouchers, there were some employees. They were getting reimbursed by mileage, because they were using their vehicles to go, do, to literally sign. Do a ti- a time card, on a different building, in a different building. So they were putting, uh, the time that it took them to get to one building to another one, to sign in pretty much for the day. So that sort of, to me, is, is a little bit of, um. I, I guess we can have a clarification on that one, and if that is the use that we should be, you know. How, how is an employee using the vehicle for, and how do we do reimbursements as well? Which is again, the reimburse was is a different topic than this one, but it's sort of related to if an employee is using his vehicle and getting reimbursed. To do things for the village, if anything.
So, ma- Manny. To me, it feels like questions of what's legitimate use or not. May or may never be covered by policy, it's kind of very common sense, and we have managers in place, and they're supposed to be responsible. To turn a voucher back to someone, say, yeah, I'm not approving this, I mean, that, there's a system in place for that. I'm not approving this, you went to get donuts, you wanted donuts, I'm not paying for that, you didn't get it for some meeting, you got it for yourself during hours. Okay, I'm not signing this, there are managers in place that are supposed to sign these vouchers. And I'm not sure that I'm personally interested in, in managing that, and by the way, when we sign the vouchers, mostly it's you. You should say, like, I don't think you guys should be signing this. As far as a policy, though, on how cars should be used and what we're covered for. I think it becomes an interesting conversation from a policy perspective that says. This is like where the rubber meets the road, I'm not gonna get involved in the minutia, but this is like a, a, a higher level kind of. Issue that affects our costs dramatically, that affects our insurance policy, so. I think we need to sort of stay there, because otherwise, this is gonna take us hours, because it's like, you know, where do you go with that?
And that's what I said, that, that is a totally separate conversation about expenses and reimburseables. But how do we use, how do employees use their vehicles, I think we should, you know, the conversation that is. But how do we use, how do employees use their vehicles? I think we should, you know, the conversation that is in front of us. That's why I want to make sure it's clarified for people to understand when they're using a vehicle to do something and what is that related to.
Okay, that would be in that other bucket that we talked about it in, that we can address um.
Reimbursable expenses do speak to to an overall um, employee handbook, so it's it's something that. Um, as we're doing these policies, will become uh, more clear and. Codified.
Yep. Okay, are there any other sort of top line um? Questions, comments? I see you put in, which I like, that every February, there's going to be some sort of a check, you know. That everybody's got insurance. You know, I think these are obvious things. I'm sure people that work for us all carry insurance uh, for their cars. But if they don't and something happens, then I say, well, you know, where do you have a policy that says I have to? Whatever, making that one up, but these things happen. That's why you have policies, so people don't shrug their shoulders and say, well, nobody told me. So um, do anybody see anything that's jumping off the page? That staff needs to be aware of, that's bothersome, or is crazy, or isn't even here maybe, that you thought would be. Um, you could always circle and send it in also, um, upon reading it um, at your leisure. Marissa, could you kindly email me a copy?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I believe I did after I forwarded, but I I will again.
Going up with this, you'd be able to look on the video at whatever time this is tonight. For those of you that, that, I'm not saying she shouldn't send it to you, I'm just saying for others who might be interested.
Going so slowly that you could.
We will uh, resend it to everybody and uh, who want, or send it to everybody, resend it, uh, anybody who wants it. Um, if the public wants it, we will provide them copies, so it's 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 not a problem.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm assuming that inch and a half pile that we all sign when we join. The village now just became two inches of. Okay, that's, that's important. Um, anybody else? Comments, questions, looking around the gallery? Thank you, Marissa, and and thank you, Maddie, for the share uh, part of the presentation. Um, alright, well, if anybody needs something to read over the next couple of days and likes to take red pens and pencils and circle. Um, do that, but I'm glad we're, I'm not making light of it. I'm just in a good mood tonight. Um, I'm just, I'm glad we're doing this. These are things we've been talking about for a long time. It's it's to get policies down. We're not a little village anymore. Um, gotta get this done. We have a lot of employees. Everything's really expensive. A little dent on your bumper is three grand, you know, it's a. It's gotta be done and people have to be held accountable, but they also have the right to know. They have the right to say, like, somebody should have told me this. I didn't know. That changes things for me. So thank you, um, all for the work. Okay, that was a little bit of a tap dance. See if anybody wanted to add. Next, please.
Marissa, um, thank you, Mayor. Next, we are going to be talking about um, the county's uh, hazard mitigation draft. Um, and we have a special meeting with a resolution uh, for the board to adopt that. Um, but as you know, we were, we have been working with the county of Westchester and our. Other, other municipalities to uh, compile um, hazard mitigation plan that. Um, will help us and help us get resources from FEMA and others and help the county to um, plan proactively. In the event of natural disasters and and um. Weather occurrences and many number of things that may befall us in terms of hazards going forward, so that we're prepared. Uh, with that, I would like to turn this over to our director of planning, Jaime Martinez, and Maddie's hot, our assistant village manager.
Everybody, good evening. I, uh, Jaime and I spoke um, about how this might go, um, and I'm just going to sort of kick us off. Um, and Jaime is going to back me up, um, as one of our subject matter experts. Um, but just basically to review where we are in the process. Um, as Karen said, this is a project, uh, we're part of a consortium with Westchester County. Uh, who received a grant and have been working with a consultant on a very, very, very consolidated uh, timeline. This was something that is supposed to get done every five years. As you might recall, uh, folks who have been on the board for a while, the last plan was uh. Twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, they were a little bit delayed in that one as well. Uh, so by COVID, we were already a bit behind. So um, we are ready to adopt, um, if if the board is uh, aligned. Um, all of our staff has taken a look at the annex, which is the section that applies specifically to the village of Austining and the hazards that uh. Our staff and and our um, experience um, has has discovered apply to us. Um, Stuart is uh, is an eagle eye. He found a couple other changes um, that he requested we make, so thank you, Stuart. Um, and we are ready to adopt. Um, the public uh, hearing through Westchester County closed in mid-December. Um, so the county has had a chance to, you know, take in whatever comments. They've not shared with us anything specific to Austining. Um, so once the board uh, approves this, I will check to make sure that there's nothing that we missed. And then we will be done with this process for another four and a half, five years. Um, so if anybody has any questions, happy to try to answer them for you.
Um, well, I'll start. Maddie, if it's a consortium and then something's tossing, so it says to me on one hand. It's the same draft for everybody in the consortium, but then you added in. We didn't get any comments back for Austining, so is it the same for the entire consortium? And is it everybody in Westchester in this consortium?
I don't believe every.
Different.
Yeah, I don't believe every single community um, participated. It doesn't cost us anything, but you did have to do a a letter. Uh, affirming that that you wish to participate, and I think there were a couple of communities who didn't follow through on that. Um, which means, you know, now unless they do the plan completely on their own, they won't have access to those FEMA resources that Karen was discussing. Um, but the uh, body of the plan that's specific to Westchester County. Um, is, you know, something that that all of the community share, right? Because it's the Westchester County piece. But the annexes are specific to our individual community, so that's what the board is is being asked to review.
I see.
So I mean, if if there are any questions, um, you know, we're we're happy to to try to answer them. Um, there is no urgent need to adopt this, but uh, the county has recommended that we adopt it before the end of January. So if there is something that we need to amend, happy to do that. Um, they're they're expecting to hear from us within the next couple of weeks with a final. And again, the team who has been reviewing this is is not just Jaime and and Karen and myself, it's also been uh, Stuart, it's been Paul, it's been Joe. It's been Andy, it's it's been a a whole team of folks, uh, making sure that we have all the uh, correct uh, and updated information. Uh, contained in this version.
And I'm I'm mayor, I'm okay with this. I um, I went through a random, I don't I don't see anything. That jumped out of me, so I'm I'm okay with everything in there. Thank you, guys.
Great. Is the, I I had one more, which I just realized as I'm reading this, is the village and the town on this together? Is it just the village? It's.
The the town has their own separate annex that that they've been working on.
And is it different from ours?
It's the unincorporated area of the town, so it speaks about hazards that are specific to their facilities that are located within the unincorporated area.
I got it, so it's outlining, okay, got it, got it. Okay, and is it uh, generally typical for the village manager and then the assistant village manager to be the key contacts? Is this all basically vanilla's? Or did we do something different in Austining that I should, somebody needs to uh, bring to our attention?
Um, for this process, again, it was, you know, pretty consolidated. I think, you know, I I can't remember exactly the timeline, but a lot of the deadlines were. You know, they would send something else on Monday afternoon and say we need this by Friday, so it was kind of an all hands on deck, um, starting in July or August, I believe.
Okay.
Um, and so at the beginning of the process, they asked for the floodplain administrator as well as a day-to-day point of contact. So Joe and Paul had really been switching off um, with the the floodplain administrator, but then. Uh, things about backup systems to our generators is obviously Andy's specialty, so we really have had a a pretty full team. Uh, making sure that not only do we have a complete inventory, but that we had some really thoughtful projects. Um, of things that could, you know, potentially be improved before the next five-year plan.
Okay, well, Manny said he read it, he read it, and he doesn't have comments or questions, I should just. Move it forward. Um, Omar Lopez, Dana White, Bob Fritchy, anybody? Thumbs up, down, questions, comments? I got two thumbs up.
It's a very complicated document. I have to say, you know, it's a filling this sucker out. It was not a little bit of work, I tell you. Um, so, I mean, I don't know how much of it is standardized for, you know, other municipalities and stuff, but.
Format is standard for everybody, but they have a lot of entry points where.
Yeah.
You know, you have to talk about what development projects are on the horizon. You have to go into their website, enter them one by one. Uh, you have to, you know, pull the data and sort of pour through whatever they have. Some of it's been compiled from the old plan and brought forward. You know, there are updates to it, but it's it's a standard format, and so it was. Um, a little tedious.
I had no idea that 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 hazard mitigation involved development that we're working. I mean, it's like not what you would think, right? It's not just like rising river levels or whatever, hurricanes, or it's all sorts of things. So anyway.
And trustee White, you're you're absolutely correct. I mean, this was, you know, I I have been, you know, a little bit of of the cat herder. But I mean, major props to to Jaime and to Paul and to Joe and to Andy um, and to Stuart. This was a Herculean effort and the county acknowledged as such, and uh, I suspect we will be a big part of their match. Uh, we were all asked to go in and periodically send a a report um, about how many hours we had spent working on the project. Um, I suspect we we probably did more than. Many other communities on this.
Uh, it was great.
That's great. No, and I appreciate that. Look, ten, fifteen years ago, people weren't discussing it. But we've had a couple of major storms in five years, for God's sake. It's like, we're the, on the side of a riverbank here, you know? Everything affects everything, and we've seen that happen. Again, speaking in simple layman English here, uh, there's nothing, just a lot of hard work. I really appreciate it. Um. It's terrific, and that's why I'm looking, because of village and the town are, you know. Geographically connected and what, and because we're on the side of a cliff, uh, something falls on the top of the hill, it slides all the way down and it's everybody. So the fact that you have to put developments and and potential future, even if you change it, you then could say, okay, that doesn't, didn't happen, you know? But um, you know.
It is a little muddy looking at like the water treatment plant, for example, because, you know, typically village properties that that we'd be concerned about would be within side village boundaries. Um, so that one's sort of a bit of an outlier that we had to sort of go back and forth with with the consultant tech tech about how they wanted it handled. Um, so yeah, but but thank you. And again, you know, if if there are any questions um, about the process, happy to answer them. But otherwise, uh, we have a resolution in the special meeting. Uh, we'd be happy for the for the board to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I had like a a cat fluff on my keyboard.
It's like, what just, wh- what's happening here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I I do, you know, in layman's terms, I think what's most important to note here is that um. You know, this exercise uh, brought us all together, um, uh, you know, all all our different departments. Looking at at um, hazards, recent storms, and in a very technical way. Um, identifying areas that we know are prone to um. Flooding and different and different things, um, as we've had storms over the years. And and what it's done is it's really helped solidify our ability to respond locally as well as responding with the county. So these are things that you don't often see after a major storm and after the national emergent, you know, the the state of emergency has passed. Um, there was a lot of work, um, and we've been working with FEMA on a lot of things, um. You know, and and we do get reimbursements. We do get reimbursements from FEMA for damages, um, so it's important work in that regard. And it's really important work in building resilience. So I do want to thank everybody, because it's, you know, one other thing that we have to do on top of everything else. Um, but it it really is um. Really important and and goes largely unseen, so it's good that we had this opportunity to discuss it publicly.
And I would publicly like to not only thank everybody, but I think we should start copyrighting all of your works. So that tomorrow morning, when other village managers try to copy all of our work uh, for future use, I want to get a percentage of the deal. Uh, because I'm, I swear to God, we've become like a sort of the uh, North Star for a lot of uh, communities to just sort of follow us. Oh, we'll do that too, because I think the work is actually really good. It's really important. And also on the reimbursement, I'd like some stormwater gardens, which will also uh, mitigate um, damage to. Uh, communities which FEMA does not cover.
Grant money for it. We're ready for you.
Yeah, there we go. Because I'm going to start having two-year-olds and up, starting to learn about stormwater gardens, so that we can make some real changes.
Well, bring them here, we'll put them to work. We can start our internship earlier.
There you go. Okay, well, listen, thank you very much all. Um, Marissa, I don't even know if you need to stay for the rest of this, but um, I always like to point out that not everybody needs to stay for the whole show. Although we always enjoy everybody's company. Um, I think we can move on. This is for tonight, correct? Maddie, yes, I thought you made that very clear.
One more work session uh, agenda item, yep.
Yeah, so our final work session agenda item is uh, we are reviewing cab- cabaret, pending cabaret licenses. For Sing Sing Hill Brewery, Atlantic Bar, Karma Lounge, and uh, Serenita. So I, with that, I will turn it over to Chief Sylvester and uh, Corporation Council.
I think probably Stuart first, right?
There's also one addition, that's El Manabita, which came in yesterday and was sent around. Uh, why don't we go in order, chief, that's okay in terms of how the agenda is. So first, folks, is Atlantic Bar. Uh, they are seeking a cabaret license. Let me just say, last year, they were awarded a cabaret license for Wednesday through Sunday. From nine thirty PM to two AM. Uh, this year, they're looking for Wednesday through Sunday. The time varies either from ten or eleven PM to either two thirty AM or three AM. Uh, and uh, you have received the redacted application with various. Uh, you know, uh, blotter log reports from OPD. Plus a report, chief, that I guess was filed with the State Liquor Authority, uh, relating to uh, uh, police referral form. Uh, uh, lack of uh, social distancing, I think during uh, during the early stages of COVID. That was last July of twenty twenty. So uh, uh, that's the first one that's up is Atlantic Bar.
Are we voting on each one separately and asking questions of the, well, we're asking questions on each one separately, of course, but are we voting on each one separately?
You will be voting next week with regard to the actual resolutions.
Okay, one by one, okay.
I, until I knew what time you wanted to put in, I couldn't create a resolution.
Right, so if I may, before um, chief, before we get to the questions in each one, I'd like uh, to just present to the board of an idea. Um, we've had this conversation before these, forget the two thirty, three AM, which is what's being asked here. But there's been a lot of conversation, given the density of the population and the increase of mixed use of. Commercial bars, retail and and housing, um, throughout the village, including the downtown. That I would actually like to, across the board, um. Recommend that one AM become the standard of cabaret closing time, not two, two thirty-three, but that one AM be considered. Um, for consistency's sake for everyone. Um, and that Sunday, as was brought up by another member of this board, is actually not a weekend. Evening, Sunday night is, Friday night should be considered a weekend evening. Um, generally speaking, um, not Sunday night. I understand with remote working and and all that and and different kind of jobs, that. The weekend versus weekdays and workdays versus like sort of is becoming blended out there. But still, Monday to Friday is generally considered, um, the regular work week. So I'd like to consider um. Making it one AM. Um, I am of the belief that nothing good when you drink and others on this call are as well. Nothing good happens when people are drinking and partying after one in the morning at bars. By the way, this does not mean the bar closes down at one AM. These are cabaret licensed for music, et cetera. Uh, the liquor um, license is, four AM is still when bars are allowed. We're not talking about bars, we're talking. About the cabaret license, but I'd like to uh, across the board, have it at one AM. Um, as we go through this, I don't know if um, anybody else wants to comment on that, but I'd like to recommend that as the, as the standard going forward.
Um, I I mean, I'll 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 talk about it. It's uh, I don't have a problem with the one AM except for the Sunday night. Um. Not numerous complaints, but we have received complaints of loud noise on a Sunday night. Not numerous complaints, but we have received complaints of loud noise on a Sunday night. And Sunday night is this week, the night you're getting ready to start your work week again. And I was always raised that nothing good happens after midnight. So, and you know, it's, it's true. Um, but I'm okay with the YN, um, the other nights. But, you know, me personally, my opinion only is Sunday night should be, I don't think past midnight. You know, and it's only an hour, but again, nothing good happens after midnight. So.
So Bob, you're saying Sunday night is really a week night?
Yes.
Okay, rather than a weekend kind of scenario. Okay.
That's a week.
Got it. Anyone else?
I agree with the Bob's assessment. I agree with your assessment. Where do you go?
Hey, thanks. And I know others have spoken, so.
I agree with that as well.
Dana, you're good?
Yes.
Okay, so as we go through that, we can go and ask questions individually, but I think directionally Stuart, that you just did get. The board's direction on the times at the end, even though we will go one by one as well.
Do you want to just be clear on something, if I might?
Yes.
Trustee Fritsch had mentioned essentially Sunday. Are you, are, are you looking at that? So you're, the only evening you're go, you're looking at midnight is Sunday? Or are you looking at weekdays to be midnight and Friday, Saturday to be one AM?
I'm good with the one AM during the Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday night. I consider Friday night. Yeah, I consider Wednesday through Saturday to be one AM and Sunday to be twelve.
Oh, that's a little different than I thought. Okay.
That's the, because this application, if I, just to remind folks, is only for Wednesday through Sunday.
Right.
Only be dealing with that.
Yeah, so Sunday literally becomes after midnight, sure, is Monday.
That's.
So that's, that's, that's sort of the logic of this whole thing, sure, is, it should be capitalized and, and that portion. So midnight will be till Sunday. Should now be until one AM and now becomes.
Right.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Sunday midnight and this happened to be Wednesday through Sunday. So I, I have no problem doing the Wednesday through Saturday for one AM and then Sunday would be twelve.
Okay, cool. Let's go through each one and then let's see how it plays out. We're, uh, which one are we on right now? I'm sorry.
Doing, first one mayor is the Atlantic Bar at eighty-four Croton Avenue.
Right. Just read it again, that they're asking for.
Okay, what they are asking for is Wednesday through Sunday. Uh, with a starting time of either ten or eleven PM, Wednesday would be ten PM. And a concluding time of either two thirty or three AM.
Okay.
On a Sunday.
Sunday would be eleven PM to two thirty. That's their proposal. What they were granted last year was nine thirty PM to two AM. I should point out that Tierra's Tropicalis, which shares the same address number of eighty-four Croton. This board gave them a twenty twenty-two cabaret license for Friday and Saturday for ten PM to one AM.
See, that is what my preference is. Exactly that. Are people okay with that?
And I'm, I'm not so much as concerned with their start time.
Right.
Finish time I'm concerned with. They could start at eight o'clock. You know, they, they decide to spell that out, that's on them. But I'm more concerned with just the, the, the end time. And they, they line up, but they're going to one o'clock like we did in twenty, that's what we gave them. Then that lines up with what, with what I'm talking about.
So it would be, so you'd be okay with the same way we did Tropicalis, those timeframes?
Yes, because they only Friday and Saturday, correct Stuart?
That is correct. That's all they were granted, trustee Fritsch.
And they went to one o'clock and I'm good with that.
Okay, so same thing here. With Sunday being midnight.
That's what the trustee said, yes.
Okay, now chief, anything to report on this particular request, requestor?
So when we discussed this last week, there was the issue raised of eighty-four Croton Avenue having a lot of reports. What I told you at that time is that the vast majority of those were not for Tierra's Tropicalis, but they were in fact for the Atlantic. So you can see there's quite a few noise complaints there and the one SLA. Uh, if you read the report there, it was that the door was locked from the inside so that nobody could come in. And once they did go in, found people vaping, serving food when they weren't supposed to be, people drinking without having food, which is requirement at that time. So not all the same requirements now, but at that time a violation based on all the COVID restrictions. Quite a bit.
So the question is, why do they still have a liquor license?
That's outside my scope of my control.
Okay.
It'll be a question for the State Liquor Authority.
But that poses a question to me now. Do we give them one, two, three strikes, you're out and we pull a cabaret? You know, what, if the state's not doing anything or it's not being, uh, you know, I don't know what that process is. As far as them being violating now because the, the doors are locked, so on and so forth. Does that give us the authority after like, okay, you got a warning, you have a second warning, third time, you're done. We're gonna pull your cabaret license. Do we have the authority to do that? And or do we want to do that?
But one, uh, and chief, I apologize to jump in. You can, the board can certainly deny the cabaret license. That's different, obviously, from their SLA license. Uh, but if the board did not wish to grant uh, a uh, a cabaret license, which it has done in other cases. It has uh, the ability to do that because they're the granting authority with, with regard to the cabaret license.
Uh, I, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is we're starting off twenty-two, let's say with a clean slate, no violations. Now they, we, we say, this is what you have, this is what we're granting. But if there's registered complaints and violations. There's two warnings and then the third time we'll, we'll, we can pull you, your cabaret license.
There is, there is a process under the code, under the license chapter. Which would allow for a process to lift the license, if in fact there were violations.
Okay, alright.
Oh, we would effectual, we would have to effectualize that, though. It's not enough that there's a process. We'd actually have to say, let's start the process, correct Stuart?
Well, the process actually starts with violations and actually begins more through the clerk's office. Because if, while you grant the license, the actual licensing official is the clerk.
So how do we get that to happen?
There's a whole, I apologize, I don't, I can read it to you. There's a whole process under chapter one seventy-one. There's a hearing, they're entitled to a hearing, they're entitled to due process, but there is a means of basically lifting the license. For actually not just the cabarets, for anyone who is granted different, it could be a coin op license, it could be a refreshment license. There is a process to actually lift the license.
Okay, so what's, what we can do to, now, and by now I mean for next week. Is either given what we discussed and then start a process with the village uh, clerk. So that we are taken seriously, we can um, pull back even uh, on the license now and say, listen. Not giving you a license. That's it. You know, I mean. This is all being recorded. They're hearing why it's happening. So that's why the stuff is in front of us. Is there any change to what we just agreed to based on this new information from the chief?
Look, look, yes, usually the applicants sort of used to come into our meeting, sure. I, I haven't seen that happen lately. Is that something that they don't, they are not required to be uh, in front of us? When, when these applications come in, Stuart?
They're not required. They were all sent emails by me that this was on tonight and I told them how to get the link. Actually, I saw that one person was on earlier. I didn't see him before and that, that's on the last one for El Manabita. Uh, I don't think the two people who are uh, not with us here are at, are on this. If they are, they can certainly raise their hands and come over at any point. But every applicant uh, uh, email, emails were sent to the email addresses on the application advising if it's on tonight. And if they wanted to be part of the meeting, how they could basically zoom in.
Somebody has their hand up, right? Elizabeth one, two, seven, three?
Okay, good.
I don't know when that went up, though. I don't know who's.
I, it just went up as Stuart was speaking.
That's when up, so um, do you want to bring Elizabeth over?
Yeah, I don't know what, which application Elizabeth is here with regard to, but.
I believe it's, I believe it's Karma Lounge, but I may be wrong.
But we, but we're not talking about Karma Lounge right now, if that's the case, so.
You know, we have no way of knowing. If it's Karma Lounge, we'll ask Elizabeth one, two, seven, three to step back. That's all. We don't know. So let's bring her over, find out what she's here for and she raised her hand.
Hey, Elizabeth.
Or him, I don't know who it is. It's just Elizabeth one, two, seven, three.
Right, there might be a bit of a delay. I will keep trying to bring Elizabeth over.
Alright, we'll figure it out.
Oh, there she is. Elizabeth, are you able to um, unmute and tell us which um, business you're here to speak on behalf of this evening?
Worked for a minute and went off again.
Elizabeth, are you able to unmute and let us know um, what item you're here to discuss? Otherwise, I'm gonna move you back over.
Somebody's helping her, I think.
Okay, Elizabeth, I'm gonna move you back, um, but, but raise your hand when you're ready to uh, to join us, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so first you have is the Atlant, is it back, is Atlantic Bar.
Okay, so again, are we good with the timing? We can talk to the village clerk to see if we want to start processing. Um, and effectualize um, a proceeding, so to speak. Or do, have any of us changed our minds since um, a few minutes ago?
My feeling is, yeah, my feeling is that my instinct is to say, I know altogether. This is a, a business that has had, you know, over the course of three years. Ninety-two different calls for service. Uh, there, we're not talking about one or two issues. It's a pattern of behavior. At the same time, these are people's livelihoods and all the rest. And just because it's a, not a business that I frequent, doesn't mean that they don't deserve a fair shake. My sense uh, would be to invite them to come in front of us at uh, our next work session. And to make their case for why I, they think that we should grant the cabaret license. Essentially saying, we're looking to put you on an improvement plan uh, for some period of time. And are looking for these kinds of changes. And then if they are able to do that, then great, then they're able to, to do it. And that might start with us limiting the times and it might involve other things. But, and then if not, then we, I can remove it altogether. That is where I, I would like to go. That's my sense.
Well, the next time we do it, isn't it work session? I think it would be next week, right Stuart?
Well, that would be your regular meeting. And again, I just should point out, emails were sent. They were never returned. And uh, so there's been no communication received, except that the application was received in the clerk's office. So.
Stuart, the gentleman who had his hand raised prior um, has, has rejoined us. So I'm not sure uh, which business he is really doing.
Can bring over whoever we need to bring over.
Before we do that, I actually, um, I, I will agree with, with Omar. I, I wouldn't want to ask them to come back, though. I would just ask them to, uh, just deny the application. I, I literally just went into their Facebook page and um. Part one of the TikTok videos uh, that was shown on November, um, at least two thousand twenty-one. It shows like a normal day. Um, so it's a little disturbing to see videos. I, that are on their Facebook uh, portion of it. Um, whereas uh, they're behaving and they're acting like nothing's going on um, around them. So to me, uh, denying this application is, it should not, it's not a problem.
So you want to deny the application? Omar, is that what you said? Is you want to deny the application? For now and have them come in? I didn't hear it that way, but that's.
No, 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 that's why he says I'm, I'm agreeing with.
Yeah, I mean, that might, yes.
No, no, no. I, I, I hear you, Manny. I heard it differently, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, my instinct is to deny the application, but I'm just trying to give them a fair shake. I, I'm just trying to be a more reasonable person, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Rather than just say, like, no, have you done with it?
Alright, so, did not, so the uh, the proposal right now is deny the, I just want to clarify. Deny the application and say to them, if you want to have a discussion and defend your position, please come in. When are you available for one of our sessions? Tell us why we should change our mind. And if you don't, you don't, but here's your shot. That's what I'm hearing.
I, I, I agree with Manny with the deny. I, I also agree with Stuart. Emails were sent, they made no effort. I do remember people coming to the board when their application was in front of us. And we have not seen that in at least two years. Manny, ever take, they were, they used to come in front of us? So they had their chance. And if they thought this was just a park block, we're just gonna pass it, then they say they mistaken. I'm for denying it.
Alright, uh, there's a majority vote. Dana, any opinion? Uh, you're on mute, I'm sorry.
Um. I would like to hear from, from them, um, you know. I, I think that two thirty to three AM is. Not acceptable. And, and in fact, yeah, it's um. You know, I'm not. You know, I, I, I would tend to agree with you, you know.
Alright, so we're gonna go with the majority. Um, I, I mean, this first one's hard. Thank you, chief, uh, for bringing. I mean, you um, you don't recommend, you simply bring data points and I appreciate that. Um, and the public should appreciate that. So just to be clear, um, we're going to deny the application in total. With um, a request, if they want to speak to us, uh, well, they know we're, how to reach us. I would also ask um, that the clerk uh, be asked to either add to the application. Just commentary as, as they go through it, that it is strongly, very strongly recommended. That people applying for the cabaret uh, present themselves in front of the board through representation or themselves. If they need interpreters, to please let us know. We will supply interpreters of whatever language they need. Um, so that we could actually meet the business people. Um, it's, it's, it's always a good thing for us to know who we're, who we're working with. And to be able to ask questions rather than, than try to guess and, and, and be able to have a relationship. And of course via Zoom, so that's fine. Um, I, I would just say that the clerk is a touch point, so emails are okay. But I think at the touch point, when the checks and all that is happening, that might be more effective, uh, to ask them to come in. So we're going to deny um, this request in total. We had a whole discussion about hours, but this one's being denied.
Okay, uh, the next one mayor.
Um, I'm sorry, and anybody who's listening on the attendees, there's three of you. Um, you raise that little um, hand on the bottom and we will bring you over. When you do, we'll see it. So when we talk about something that you're here for and you do want to have a conversation about it, oh, please do that. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Next is Karma Lounge. It, just to refresh the board, in twenty twenty-one, the cabaret license provided operations Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Noon to midnight, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, noon to two AM. Uh, the uh, application presented here uh, is uh, Monday through Sunday. Uh, and for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eleven AM to, to midnight. And on Thursday through Sunday, uh, eleven AM until three AM.
Okay. Um, chief, why don't we let you go first this time?
There's a fair amount of calls there, but karma tends to be cooperative. Nothing really to say for this one.
Okay, um, I would go back and not to be redundant to what I said before, which is one AM. is the outer limit of midnight on Sundays. Everybody okay?
Mayor, can I just be clear then? Because they're going Monday through Sunday, it would be Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday would be till mid midnight and then Friday, Saturday till one AM.
That's what, that's the way I'm hearing it.
Now, I just want to make sure, because we just.
I know, I know, because this one's, everyone's a little different. Everybody get that? So that, because that's the direction we're giving.
Okay, yeah. I'd also know that the application says twelve PM. My sense is that they mean twelve AM.
We, we, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, I agree with what the manager said.
Thank you. The next is the Sing Sing Kill Brewery. Just again, for as a refresher, in 2021, the cabaret license provided Monday through Sunday, noon to two AM. The request is similar for this year. I do want to point one thing out, and I did have a brief back and forth with Mr. Garrity. This application and actually prior applications as well indicated normal hours of operation, noon to eleven PM. So that would indicate that, in fact, the cabaret would be open after the brewery is closed. Now, when I wrote that to Mr. Garrity, he wrote back to me and said, for the past three years, our cabaret license application has been approved for the hours of twelve PM until two AM. During the course of the year, we periodically change our hours of operation based on seasonal and economic impacts. And two AM is consistent with the village's cap on business cabaret license approvals. I only point out to you, and it will happen with one more application, is that the hours of operation actually precede the hours of operation for the cabaret. So it's a little confusing.
Right. I do think, though, that there are sometimes events, so I don't know if that changes. I don't know what the hours of operation actually means legally to us from a village point of view. Does that mean that if that's, that they're not allowed to be open after eleven PM for any reason?
I mean, if the idea of the cabaret is it's serving food and drink, but basically it's closed down and all you have then is a cabaret. I, I only, again, I'm pointing out.
It's semantically incorrect, I think, is one of the issues, but I, I feel like it's for an event or they might change your operating hours. They want to leave that open. I personally don't have an issue with it. For me, consistency across the village is somewhat, it's not a hundred percent has to be, but it would be, I think, fair. It's a competitive field too, so you know, it would be fair to give one, but not another, because you know, it's a similar, theoretically a similar business. I'm good with what we had just said, which is one AM, same thing for the same days, one AM and midnight for the others. Same thing we just did.
I agree. We stay the course.
Everybody okay with that?
Okay, thank you, folks. Next is our neighbor Serenita Lounge over at the twelve Crotton Avenue. To refresh the board, last year, the cabaret license was Thursday.
Excuse me, one second. Chief, I don't think you commented on Sing Sing. Did you comment on Sing Sing?
I didn't. Nobody asked, no.
No, so I'd like to just be consistent. Sorry, go ahead.
Sure. Not much police activity there, nothing to comment.
Okay, thank you. I think it was expected, but I just, I want to be consistent here. Okay.
Next, as I said, Serenita Lounge. In 2021, their cabaret license was Thursday through Monday, six PM to two AM. They are asking this year for Thursday through Monday, four PM to two AM. So that's, that's their request.
Okay, why would you need that at four PM?
I would stay the course with them, so, or Chief, I'm sorry, do we have anything on that? I'm not stealing your thunder, you know.
Chief, anything on them?
We've had a lot of complaints there. The blotters are attached, don't appear to document everything that's been there. I don't know if it's coming up as a different address than twelve Crotton Avenue, but they're a consistent headache, and we've had a lot of trouble there.
I'm trying to find it. Give me a sec. I looked at it earlier today, actually.
I believe it only comes up with about ten blotters, but if you look at it under the business name, it comes up with different numbers, and I believe that some of the reports are going being filed under a different address or something else is drawing them away from that on the search. Our records management system leaves a lot to be desired.
Okay, hold on.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. This is not the first year that there's been issues in that particular location, correct?
There's been consistent problems over the years.
Okay.
I believe we have denied this particular business previously on Cabaret License as well.
All right, this is going to follow suit. Are you guys still there? Okay, lost you there for a second. For me, it follows the same suit. I'm going to go for, now I remember this, finally found it. Um, I am going to recommend that we deny this one as well.
I agree.
Me too.
Okay.
I agree.
We have a majority. Dana, you're going with the majority, or would you like to?
Yeah, I'll go with the majority.
Okay, I think we have the direction on this one. Stuart, next.
Thank you, Mayor. Last, we have the El Manabita. Yes, El Manabita. Matty, there's a gentleman, Steven Vasquez Gonzalez. I believe he is, he's listed as one of the folks on the application here, so I believe that he may want to come over and just talk with us on this one.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm going to bring you on over. Hold on one moment.
Okay.
Okay, sir, you are here. If you can unmute, board is looking to hear from you. Hi there.
Mayor, if I might, before Mr. Vasquez Gonzalez chats, last year, the cabaret license issued for El Manabita was Monday through Thursday, noon to eleven PM, Friday, Saturday, noon to two AM. The request for this, for the 2022, would be Monday through Sunday, with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, starting at four thirty in the afternoon, going to one thirty AM, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, starting at four thirty and going to two thirty AM. Again, similar to the situation with Sing Sing Kill, the hours of operation are actually listed as four thirty to twelve thirty, which would again have the, the, the location closing before the cabaret closes. So that may be, and that is something I wrote to the owner earlier today, so perhaps that's one of the reasons they're on with us tonight.
Mr. Gonzalez, welcome. Could you unmute? Yes. So I see two of you. Well, now there are two of you there. Are you the owners? Or who's the owner?
I'll translate.
You're translating.
Okay, I'm the one. El Manabita. Hi, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Welcome and to both of you. I'm Mayor Levin, and we have the trustees with us tonight. Thank you for joining us. You put in an application, I think council is just gone through some of the description. I don't know if there's something you would like to add to the conversation. I don't know if you've been listening to the other specifically that we are opening, we are going for one AM cabaret across the board in the village moving forward. That might be a change, that is a change. Is there anything else you would like to add or let us hear about your business or anything else you would like to let us know about your business or yourself?
I understand the bill is proposed, but I think that one AM is too early to close, especially now in the daytime. The people must be after twelve, they be to the place. They don't go early to the place, even in the pandemic, when we work at night, nobody been there, after they extended to ten. When the time extended to twelve, the people be a little bit more, more. But the people, they don't like be early in the nighttime. We understand that the bill is want to keep quiet, organize and keep the people out of the tree in the morning. But one, we consider, I consider this too early.
So thank you. And by the way, we have at least two trustees that speak Spanish. You speak whatever language you want. Your English is fine. It is a hundred times better than my Spanish. And I got it all, but sometimes, you know, just so you know, that we do have two trustees, in case you want to make some point that you're struggling with. So why are you opening? Why do you need it four thirty if people come in later? I'm actually curious. It doesn't bother me one way or the other. I'm simply curious, since you're a member of our community, it's an opportunity for me to just learn something. Why do you want the cabaret for four thirty if people come in later?
It started four thirty in the afternoon. No, it's four thirty in the morning.
No, no, four thirty in the afternoon. Why do you need cabaret at four thirty in the afternoon?
We, we, we're already, we're already open, we're already open, but we don't use, we don't, we don't use the license in the afternoon.
Oh, so you're just doing it to cover yourself. You're just doing it because that's when you open, so why not, is what, is what you're saying. I see.
Every entertainment, we got some problem a few years ago. In the evening, when the guy got, when the guy got the TV, when the officer being there, he said the TV is considered a cabaret license to play, to show the TVs in the place. They said that I would need, I need the cabaret license to, if I don't got cabaret license, I can be open. And I had one, one month closed. I can open because I don't have the cover license that time. One month closed. Because I send it, I send it, but I don't get the physical license with me. The bill is charged, but I can open. I stayed one month closed because I don't have the covering that time. But now, that's the reason because I included on that opening.
Got it. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Okay.
I can, I can go. And if I may, I'll ask the question in English and then I'll ask in Spanish. So recognizing the position that we are in, there is a tension, there is a balance that we're trying to strike between honoring the feedback that we've gotten from the community around quality of life and wanting noise to be minimized, particularly during weeknights, and the businesses that are here that are trying their best to stay open, particularly during this difficult time. And so in an effort to be fair, we've put the same limitations across the board to every kind of business that has come in front of us, asking for cabaret licenses. But I'd like to get a better sense of to what extent you feel like that is going to limit your capacity to stay open in the long term. So I'll just quickly ask in Spanish. Una de las cosas que nosotros encontramos aquí, primeramente, le quiero dar las gracias por venir a usted. Eso es su hijo.
Sí, señor.
Sí, okay. A usted y su hijo para venir a las de nosotros. Nosotros tenemos un balance que estamos tratando de encontrar entre la comunidad que nos han dado la queja que especialmente durante la semana de los domingos hasta los jueves, ellos trabajan el próximo día, etcétera, y a veces la policía también que nos dan los reportes de problemas que están pasando que a las dos, tres, cuatro de la mañana. Y también los negocios que tenemos aquí en nuestra villa que están tratando de mantener sus puertas abiertas especialmente durante este tiempo difícil de COVID. Nosotros queremos apoyar nuestros negocios pequeños. Queremos oídos de su perspectiva sobre una decisión que nosotros hemos tomado de poner el límite igual en todos los negocios que no han pedido por una licencia de cabaret, que es mantener la licencia de cabaret disponible viernes y sábado hasta las una de la mañana, y entonces los otros días hasta las doce. Usted ya ha mencionado cómo eso también lo afecta usted. Si me puede dar un poco más de detalles, que si nosotros ponemos ese límite, si usted puede mantener su puerta abierta, particularmente en el largo plazo.
Sí, como no, muy bien. Te agradezco mucho la pregunta, pero mira, según, según los reportes, son cosas mínimas las que ustedes están mirando. Una persona que está, yo que ande borracho en la matugada, una persona que ande borracho en la mañana, una persona que toca el clavo, la bocina del carro cuando vas a salir, una persona que habla frente al establecimiento o más, más de cien pies, menos de cien pies del establecimiento. Esas son cosas muy mínimas, que eso todo, todos lo podemos contribuir, mejorar y hasta eliminar. No voy a decir cien por ciento, pero sí lo podemos reducir al máximo. Yo pienso que esas son cosas mínimas. Si me dijeran que andan gangas, que andan robando, que andan atracando, que andan matando, que andan baleando, que andan apuñaleando en los negocios y que la gente, esos son los puntos de donde la delincuencia sale, yo te diría completamente de acuerdo. Pero yo pienso, yo mi manera particular y personal de ver las cosas, que son cosas muy mínimas. Yo pienso que envolverse en eso es algo muy, muy, muy arriesgado para nosotros, los pequeños negocios, porque en verdad, en verdad, nuestro mayor punto de venta está desde diez de la noche a dos de la mañana. Nuestro sostén es los taxistas, la persona que vive en Flores, martender, mesero, cocinero, y nosotros, los dueños de negocios también entienden. Es muy, es muy arriesgado. O sea, esto sería sacarnos del negocio. A la una de la noche será garantizo que sería obligarnos cerrando nuestra puerta.
Okay, gracias. To quickly, again, translate his response. He said, the kinds of complaints that we've gotten have been relatively minor. I always complain, people honking their horns when they leave or speaking loudly in front of the business or things like that. And they've tried and they will continue to try to manage that. But the majority of their business comes between ten PM and two AM. The folks that frequent their businesses are bartenders, taxi drivers, folks that work at restaurants, other folks that are working people that after they work, want to go somewhere to unwind, and so go to his establishment. And limiting it at twelve PM or even one AM has a negative effect on his business. Okay, muchas gracias.
Thank you. Chief, could you just repeat for this location, what is happening here with the data points?
We spend an awful lot of time there, mainly based on a large volume of complaints. The police waters are there, don't document everything that people are complaining about. I think that perspective is important in a lot of cases, and when someone says the complaints are relatively minor for noise and people talking outside or making noise when they leave or smoking cigarettes outside. If that was outside your window, I suspect that you may feel differently about that. So I think that the board needs to take seriously the complaints of the folks that live in that neighborhood who are calling on a daily and sometimes weekly basis, not only to my office. I understand the manager takes some of those calls. And the relay that has come to me is that those folks stopped calling the police because they feel that nothing can be done. Because cops don't have the ability to shut a place down, we have to just discuss with them and lower music. And how many times can you be woken up in the middle of the night to lower music? In terms of the people that go there, sometimes when I'm coming into work, I see people still leaving. I don't know who all the people that go there. I know there's a van of women that usually get dropped off and picked up at some point in the night. Not sure where that comes from. But I can tell you that we have hundreds of entries for time spent there, which, for those of you that have been on board for a while, will know that that is not only calls for service, but the amount of time that it takes us to sit outside and manage the problem so that we can try and avoid some of the complaints of noise and try and head these off before they come. I can tell you from going through reports that a lot of them are unruly patrons, over-serving patrons, and then complaining that drunk people want to fight you and you ask them to leave is sort of a self-made problem, in my opinion. But, you know, I leave that up to the board as to how you choose to deal with that. is sort of a self-made problem in my opinion, but, uh, you know, I leave that up to the board as to how you choose to deal with that.
Thank you, Chief. Um, thank you. Uh, Maddie, I think we can, um, Mr. Gonzalez, I think you can, uh, put him back in the attendees.
Before, mayor, before he leaves, if I may, ask a few questions.
Please.
Um, so last year, was the last year, Karen? Yes, last year, um, there was a meeting of some businesses and, uh, Mr. Gonzalez was, uh, I was actually, uh, Vasquez Gonzalez was actually there, was one of the members in there. And, uh, one of the things that we have talked about at that time, it was, uh, you know, we were talking about so many specifics and, and he's obviously his business was brought up and some of the issues that, you know, that Omar just mentioned and, and part of his translation. One of the things that we did say, and I'm not sure, and Chief, you can correct me if, um, if you know anything, but, um, Lieutenant Donahue was there, uh, as part of the presenter. And one of the things that I did say it and I, and I believe we, we sort of agree and I'm not sure if Mr. Vázquez ever got back to, to or contact, uh, the, the department. Because, you know, there, he said, at least at that meeting, he mentioned that he would like to work with the police department to remediate a lot of the situations that were, that were happening. And he's a business, just to clarify any of that stuff. Now, Chief, do you know if that happened?
Not to my knowledge, but it's very possible. He reached out to someone without speaking to me. I don't hear everything goes on, but ordinarily something like that would have been a topic of conversation for at least an admin meeting and I haven't heard anything. I will check tomorrow morning to confirm.
Let's ask him.
Yeah. So, señor, señor Vázquez, una pregunta. Usted se comunicó con el departamento de policía después de la reunión que hubo el año pasado?
No.
Por qué?
No, bueno, una vez, una vez lo llamamos, una vez solamente llamamos, una vez.
Okay. Pero nosotros quedamos en acuerdo que usted se iba a comunicar con, con el departamento de policía para tratar de remediar las situaciones que estaban pasando en su local, correcto?
Sí, sí, Manuel, tiene ese así, así es. Pero yo solo una vez he necesitado la asistencia, que fue una vez que me rompieron un cristal del.
No, 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 yo, yo entiendo eso, pero la pregunta fue que el, las circunstancias que en las que hablamos del año anterior fue que había problemas con su negocio y que usted se iba a comunicar con el, con el tenen, que estaba ahí presente ese día en la reunión que tuvimos y que iban a tratar de ver cómo se pueden comunicar o haber una, una comunicación más ah, abierta entre su negocio y el departamento de policía. So desafortunadamente, esa reunión no pasó.
Pero la policía no ha ido allá.
Lo que estoy diciendo de eso, lo que estoy diciendo es que iba a haber una, que usted y el departamento de policía iba a tener un diálogo.
No, 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 en eso no quedamos. Después que nos reunimos allá, no, no, no quedamos en, en esa, en yo llamar a la policía y hablar con ellos. No, no quedamos en eso cuando fuimos a la, a, a, a Billis, que fuimos todos los dueños de negocio.
No, no, pero el, la, okay, so no voy a, a seguir hablando de ese. Mi entendimiento fue en ese día de la reunión que iba, que, que se iba a pasar entre su negocio y ellos. Pero si no pasó, no hay problema.
Sí, sí. No sé, si quedamos en eso, yo no, no, en verdad, no recuerdo que yo me comprometiera a hablar con ellos. Yo hablé con, con, eh, con el otro capitán, pero, pero con el tenis no, no, no es bueno. Después de esa reunión, no he llamado a la policía, no.
Okay, no hay problema. Gracias. So pretty much there was no, no communication after the meeting. His recollection is that there was never an understanding that he will call the police department to have a dialogue uh, in regards to relationship, what the issues were in his business. So we're just gonna leave it like that.
Well, I don't say a lot of Spanish, but I'm pretty sure you also said that you were there and that that you were present there and that you did ask for, that it was asked for. I mean, my Spanish isn't great, but I got that much out of it. Um, so with this many complaints, with the input that we've gotten, um, I'm going to stay consistent and in my opinion, there has to be a consideration to deny the application until serious conversation is had so that there is an equilibrium between the needs of a business and the needs of the community. But our responsibility as a board of trustees is, um, to the entire community. And when neighbors complain about, um, businesses that are not managing their clientele, which is what bars actually have to do. You can't over serve people, uh, because they get drunk and they get ruly and they're not controllable. And a bar that is owned or any business is not living on an island. It sits, um, near its neighbors and its neighbors also have a right to a quality of life, just like they have a right uh, to make a living and their customers have a right to enjoy themselves. But everything has to be done within boundaries and we have a responsibility to all actors involved. From my perspective, it's no different, um, than another application that we looked at today. Given the number of complaints and the issues that are being had, um, until further conversation is seriously had, either through representation or through the owners themselves, um, which is an option, um, to meet with the village manager and/or to meet with the chief of police or both, um, with serious conversation. Um, I think to be consistent, we should deny the application. I leave it though. We need a majority vote and we'll leave it, um, in the hands of my colleagues on the board.
Mayor, ma'am, move, um, Mr. Gonzalez back over now?
Please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And thank you both of you for, um, for coming tonight.
I just.
Oh.
What happened?
I think he was gonna say something.
I was, I was moving him. I will move him back. My apologies.
Oh, I didn't realize you wanted to say something. Okay.
Okay.
We did meet with Mr. Gonzalez, um, at the police department prior to the meeting that we had, uh, that trustee, um, Casada, was that?
I think that's what he said to him in Spanish too, Karen. Sir.
Gonzalez, I'm sorry I cut you off. Please.
Well, I think it's, did somebody want to speak?
That's his son.
Okay.
I was wondering if it would be, if we could compromise and do the one A M. closing? And maybe you could, like, leave the application and not tonight?
It's not a negotiation, sir. Um, it's a request for an application. Um, in a business that, um, has been before us before. And, um, I really do appreciate you, you all coming and actually we're going to start requesting that people who want to speak in front of us should take it seriously. Um, we have lots of complaints and we, I think we've said everything that we have. Um, I think that you, um, in your business, um, need to sit down with the village manager and/or the chief of police in a room and start hashing out some of the responsibilities and, um, changes that you're willing to make. Uh, because we, um, we're gonna need to have that happen. I appreciate it, but this, this, the process here is not necessarily so much negotiation as a request for an application. And the board has to, um, either accept the application, deny it, or make some changes. And I appreciate the one o'clock, but I don't think that's the direction that we're heading right now tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I get a majority, uh, vote? Um, did everybody add in what they had to? Or want to make additional comments? I, I'm trying to convey, um, what I'm hearing tonight so that our attorney can go forward.
So I think it's still with that. Okay. Uh, mayor, if, I, I agree with you. I think we should deny this application. Uh, but I think I want to make a caveat on, um, not just on this one, but on the other applications that we have denied, uh, early in this evening. If, if they were willing, I think the caveat will be, and we have done this before. Uh, this is not something new, where with the next six months, they work with the village and our police department. And we can see that in six months from now, there, they have changed, they have improved, they have tried to do something. They can always come back in front of us and then we can revisit this. But I, you know, my suggestion will be, you know, to deny this application. But again, not just for this application, but for the other ones that were denied.
Yeah.
We can, they can always come back as long as they have done the steps to remediate the situations that put them in that, and, and, and this denial, uh, portion of, of our meeting, so.
I think that was said earlier in a different way, uh, by trustee Lopez as well and also seconded by someone. We need to see a meaningful plan and one that gets carried, um, because this just can't keep going on. Um, we denied somebody else tonight. This is a second denial. Um, the rest also, if they want to do it till later, they're welcome to discuss it. That's up to them. I, I, that works for me. And I do think the clerk needs to be notified that she, um, should encourage people to, to sort of speak with the village and come to us. Because I think we're making it very clear tonight with some of our boundaries and level of tolerance is and are believe in equitable behavior across our, across the village for businesses and their neighbors. Um, Stuart, am I leaving anything out?
Oh, we, we're, we're agreeing to deny tonight for six months.
Uh, we're agreeing to deny if the business wishes to come in front of uh, the village manager and/or police and put a plan together, they can come back to us. I don't know if we're denying only for six months. We're denying the application. They could come back in thirty days for all I care with the plan or in, in six months or not.
Thirty days is not going to prove a track record. I agree with Manny. They, yes, meet with the village manager and the police chief and figure it out. And in six months, we look at the complaints and if it hasn't changed, it stays denied. If it has changed, then it would put it up for reconsideration. That's my understanding of what Manny said.
Okay, um, all right. So you want to put like a six?
I, I.
Window? I, I don't understand.
A six-month probation denied.
No, 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 Bob, no, I'm sorry, Bob. No.
Yeah, I think you're hearing it differently.
It was a denial. I, I think what I, probably what I meant to say is, you know, as, as you sort of alluded to, uh, I thought thirty days is not enough to prove if they have changed, but I think if we give them enough time, it doesn't have to be six months, you know?
Okay.
In, it does extend the period of time, but they have to come back. And, and at some point, if they want to, this, they're, they, they're able to come back this year at some point with, after they have a communication with the manager's office, the police department, we have seen an improvement. You know, they have seen an improvement and they, they can be able to refile the application within itself.
I see.
Yeah.
Hey, I, I just want to, like, real, set the expectations because we've had a couple meetings. We are more than happy and we've told all the businesses that we've met with that we want them to be successful. We've also been really, really clear on what they can and can't do, uh, to be successful. And, um, in, in the issue of, of this particular businesses, it's, we've had two meetings. So I, I, there's not really a plan we can come up with. It really is, we've been very, very clear about what would be acceptable and what wouldn't. If, if the businesses wanted, you know, continued conversation, we're happy to help them. They're also working, um, they had, I think they were working with somebody from S L A. But as, as far as a plan, like, I, I don't want to speak for the chief, but I, I'm not really in a, a position to create a plan with them. They need to actually, it, it's very clear. Um, the issues are over serving. The issues are vans of women showing up at three o'clock in the morning. The issues are like pretty basic issues here. They're, they, we cannot continue to do that. Um, the issues of people, we have told the businesses that they are responsible for what happens in the parent, you know, in, in the outer perimeter of their business. Um, they're, you know, I, I agree that if, if they really make a commitment to change those things. But I'm, I, when we say plan, I, I need to really understand what that means because we're very limited to, to take the time to do that.
But let me ask, I get, I, I'm hearing you. Stuart, let me ask this differently on behalf of the board, uh, on behalf of the conversation I'm hearing here. There is no time, can somebody, it's a yearly, um, request. Can somebody come back in six months and ask again? And if we look at the records and there's a change, we can have that discussion? Or can they not ask again during twenty twenty-two for now? Can they not apply during twenty twenty-two?
Applied for twenty twenty-two, you've denied it. They can come back and resubmit and if they want to, and you can look at it again. I mean, all, all the resolution is going to say is that they've applied and it has been denied. It's not gonna, it's not gonna say anything else if they want to come back. Uh, you know, they get their, uh, uh, you know, I believe they get their feedback and they can, they can do it again.
So basically, the, the process is already in place. If certain improvements are made and we look and see a reduction in the calls and a reduction in some of the negative behavior and all of that stuff, we can reconsider. And I think that's fair. And there isn't even a time limit, so we don't need to put a time limit. Because it could be done at any time.
I, I mean, businesses, uh, talked about doing certain soundproofing, things like that, but that's really what, you know, the onus is on them to develop the plan. Um, and if.
I heard you. Yeah.
So.
Got it. I just don't think a six-months, because frankly, Bob, they can come back and if their numbers get better in four months, they can come back in four months or, or seven months. So it's not even nee- needed.
Whatever you want to go.
Yeah, it's not even necessary, frankly.
All right. No question. Um, so without a cabaret license, that, a cabaret license allows you to play music, right? And, and it has payment. You operate as a business without it?
Yes.
You just can't have acts or entertainment or is it true you can't have the TVs on without a cabaret license?
No, that's not why.
So you could, could, so I guess the question is you still operate as a business. You just can't have a DJ come in or, right? You can't.
Right, but you lose your privilege to having that as part of your business model. That's correct.
Couldn't close you down, shouldn't necessarily.
Oh.
No, and it won't reduce the noise of the four A M. people outside fighting or driving drunk into police cars or up and over the sidewalk and all the other things that we respond to on a regular basis.
Well, I'm hearing that, uh, the bar, um, needs to improve, um, their business, uh, behavior in the community. Um, for people who are involved, certainly more than, uh, most of us are. Um, I think we can move on, Stuart, because I think you have the direction that you need.
I do. Uh, Karen, unless I'm wrong, I believe that's the last item on the work session.
I thought you had one more, didn't?
No, we did, we did.
Okay, we did.
We have this special meeting.
So can I have a motion now to adjourn the work session to go to special meeting?
Oh, well, I can.
Comments?
All in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're closing this portion, ten P M. on the twelfth of January. We're going to special meeting.
Mayor, we're staying, we're staying in this Zoom.
I got it.
We are.
But for people who watch this a year from now, don't know.
Just, just for completeness sake, we will take attendance. Uh, deputy mayor Kazada.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Fritchy.
I am present.
Trustee White.
We lost trustee White.
Lost her.
Did she think she was supposed to go to a different Zoom?
Probably.
Okay, Mayor Levin.
I am here. We have a quorum. I will text her.
All right. Well, while you're texting her, I will ask, is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on either of the resolutions that will be considered by the board during this special meeting? And I'm assuming from that, there is no one. So, resolution A, authorizing the adoption of the twenty twenty-two Westchester County New York Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Whereas all jurisdictions within Westchester County have exposure to natural hazards that increase the risk to life, property, environment and the county and local economy. And whereas proactive mitigation of known hazards before a disaster event can reduce or eliminate long-term risk to life and property. And whereas the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, Public Law one oh six dash three ninety established new requirements for pre and post-disaster hazard mitigation programs. And whereas a coalition of Westchester County municipalities with like planning objectives has been formed to pool resources and create consistent mitigation strategies within Westchester County. And whereas the coalition has completed a planning process that engages the public, assesses the risk and vulnerability to the impacts of natural hazards, develops a mitigation strategy consistent with a set of uniform goals and objectives and creates a plan for implementing, evaluating and revising this strategy. Now therefore be it resolved that the village of Osning one adopts in its entirety the twenty twenty-two Westchester County Hazard Mitigation Plan, the plan as the jurisdiction's natural hazard mitigation plan and resolves to execute the actions identified in the plan that pertains. and resolves to execute the actions identified in the plan that pertain to this jurisdiction. Two, we'll use the adopted and approved portions of the plan to guide pre and post disaster mitigation of the hazards identified. Three, we'll coordinate the strategies identified in the plan with other planning programs and mechanisms under its jurisdictional authority. Four, we'll continue its support of the mitigation planning committee as described within the plan. Five, we'll help to promote and support the mitigation successes of all participants in this plan. Six, we'll incorporate mitigation planning as an integral component of government and partner operations. Seven, we'll provide an update of the plan in conjunction with the county, no less than every five years. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Think we can vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution B, authorizing the village manager to sign an agreement with Nexus Creative relating to the rehabilitation of the elevator at sixteen Crotton Avenue. Resolved that upon review by the Corporation Council, the village manager is authorized to sign an agreement with Nexus Creative, one hundred White Plains Road, Tarrytown, New York, relating to the rehabilitation of the elevator at the municipal building sixteen Crotton Avenue, Osning, New York. And be it further resolved that the scope of services, deliverables and fee are detailed in the proposal agreement dated January five, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor, do I have a motion to adjourn the special session and adjourn this meeting?
Oh.
We're not going into any exec or legal, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. Okay, I heard us so moved. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. It is ten oh five. That was one of our shorter meetings. Thank you everybody for staying with us and being so thoughtful. It is ten oh five on the twelfth of January. Have a good evening. We will be on again. We will be on again next Wednesday. Thank you all. Have a good night.